Good evening to you all and welcome to our first council meeting for the month of August, August the 3rd. Thank you all for being present here this evening and thank you for assisting us by wearing your mask and by social distancing. I guess you don't have any choice if you want to sit in the seats out there, but good to see you all anyway. To open our meeting tonight, I'm going to ask the clerk if he will to call the roll.
Mayor, I'm present.
Here.
Dr. Delling, here.
Dr. Matthews, here.
Dr. Singleton, here.
Here.
And I understand Mr. Singleton has been in touch and will be probably about 10 or 15 minutes late, so we anticipate he will join us pretty soon. Okay, it's my privilege at this point in time to recognize Councilmember Phil Matthews, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and then will lead us in our invocation. Mr. Matthews, if you will, please stand if you're able.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you this evening to thank you for another day of gift of life. We thank you for a country we can all live in and the freedoms that we enjoy, with prices paid for by veterans, those still alive and those who made the supreme sacrifice. Lord, with these troubled times, with this COVID-19, Lord, we ask that you will find that cure and make it as fast as possible so we can heal our country back up. Lord, be with our country with all the turmoil that's going on. I pray for our leaders in Washington as well as state level, that we can make good decisions and to resolve those problems. Be with this council tonight as we deliberate on items that concern our town, grant us wisdom to make the right decisions and to help move Garner forward. All these things, we'll pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Just before I ask if there are petitions and comments, I want to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Kathy Behringer, who has a statement of comments she'd like to make at this time.
You all will remember seeing in the newspaper and on the news a couple of weeks ago about the tragic death of Ymir Green, one of our citizens and one of our young people who grew up in Garner. I first met Ymir when he was about eight or 10 years old. He and my daughter were on an interfaith drama team and Ymir was just a delight to be around, who brought sunshine in the room when he came in. And he was a young man who overcame a lot of challenges with the support of his family and his community and his church. Lot of things that were really, really rough in his life, but he overcame them and he went on to become a success and an inspiration to everybody who knew him. So I just wanted to take a minute and say one more time that if you knew me, Ymir Green, your life was made richer because of it.
Okay, thank you. I did not know the young man, but I've certainly heard any number of testimonials regarding his life and some of you may have heard one of our famous citizens, Mr. Scotty McCreary, who gave a musical tribute in memory of him. Well stated. Okay, at this point in time, I'm going to go to the agenda that you have before you. Excuse me, before I do that, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody sign up for petitions at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. This is the time when we invite the public, if they want to make comments or petition the council. We ask you really to sign up in advance and apparently nobody has, but if you've come with that intent, we would allow you to do this. We would ask you to keep your comments concise and we would remind you that any comments and petitions made would not necessarily be taken up by the council at this time, but could be referred to appropriate departments for further comment and/or investigation. So is there anyone here at this point that desires to make any public comment? Okay, and if you're here for a hearing, certainly we'll recognize you at the proper time. But sir, if you would come to the podium there and...
I think we're going to discuss new development, the edge of all...
Yes, yes.
Since my comments relate to that, maybe we should...
I believe that would be appropriate. Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, you'll have an opportunity then. Anybody else? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move to item E, which is adoption of the agenda. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, move. We adopt the agenda.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Behringer and/or Mr. Delling. Okay, any further discussion, comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of the agenda, as you have it before you, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, so agenda is adopted. Okay, we now are at item F, which is a presentation, and I'm pleased to see that we do have someone we're recognizing this evening. So at this point, I guess Mr. Town Manager, you're going to lead off the presentation. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, and I'm going to have Interim Chief Joe Benz join me. We'll say some remarks about Grant Davis, who's standing in the back of the room. I know we got to social distance, but you can come up here and be seen somewhere.
We don't have to do...
We don't have to go that far. So Grant Davis, he retired on July the 15th, so just a few weeks ago. He was hired as a police officer here in Garner, August the 5th, in 1991. So that was a while back.
Long time ago.
Yeah, so he started his career as a patrol officer from 91 to 98 and worked at the Garner Magnet High School as a SRO officer for a few years. He was very well-known and liked by the students and the staff alike, and he mentored a lot of students through that program. That program has a lot of educational mentoring and bonding and just teaching students about police and those type of things. He became an investigator after serving as a SRO, a very dedicated investigator and worked very hard to close cases, worked tirelessly. He understood the importance of solving the crimes as he tackled each one with the same drive and tenacity. He was promoted to sergeant and served as both a patrol supervisor and an investigator supervisor. So he led a couple of crews, teams, to solve crimes. He was a mentor to other officers and he was viewed as a leader, very involved in the community he lived in and he served here. He led the department's challenge camp with, I don't know if we do that anymore, but that was, we still do? Okay, so youth camp, where they take youth on a few days out camping in the woods and teach them life lessons. He also volunteered with PAL, the Police Athletic and Activities League, and also SCORE, which is a reading program for second graders in Garner Elementary School. He always puts others before himself. He's very humble. So I said, he started in 1991, so some fun facts about 1991. Gas was $1.12, which, pretty low. It has gone down a lot, so that fact is not as dramatic as it would have been a few months ago, but still pretty good. The Dow Jones averaged top 3,000 for the first time. The internet was made available to unrestricted commercial use and the number of computers on the net reached 1 million. So we're well beyond that now. Popular films were Father of the Bride and Thelma and Louise. So you've got to tell me which one was your favorite among those two, or you can say none of the above.
That's it.
All right, and popular musicians were Guns N' Roses, Boys to Men, Whitney Houston.
Guns N' Roses.
Yeah, I was going to say you look like a Guns N' Roses-type guy. Yep, yep, yep. All right. Another thing about Grant that a lot of his friends and coworkers know is that he is an avid Carolina Hurricanes fan. So as you can see with the mask, so he's happy. They won today, I think it's two in a row. And the other thing is, he's an avid East Carolina Pirate and loves his football and is, I'm told, is a professional tailgater. One of the things that he's really good at is he loves to smoke meat, so I imagine he'll have the grill going and I think he does it for hire. No? So he retired from that?
He just called me.
Okay, so he retired from everything. I know I tried to call you twice and it said you were not taking calls, so I don't know if it's because you were retired or you saw the town of Garner on the caller ID. So I'm going to take it you were at the beach and not able to answer. Okay, I'll go with that one. All right, all right. So I'm going to let Officer Benz come up and say a few words and you want to recognize Chief Zudema?
Yeah, certainly. If you would note, like Rodney said, Grant is an avid Canes fan. I think the last six months of his career at Garner, we were going to have to, you know, get some crisis intervention going on because they closed everything down with COVID and he was going through withdrawals, very much so. I would like to say to Grant, you will never find a more dedicated servant to this community. Grant has served, I've been here 27 years, 29 years of his time here. It's just, that's an amazing feat to last that long in a career, especially to provide that service to the town. As Rodney said, he served a lot of different areas, whether it's school resource officer, investigator, he served as a supervisor of investigations. Each time that he was in those positions, he was hard-pressed to come out because he loved what he did, whether it was working in the schools, I mean, he really loved doing that. He was an investigator, he was a hard-nosed investigator, really worked those cases really hard for our victims in the community, so we're really proud of that. But he had to be pulled out of every one of those positions and pushed to the sergeant position where he finally retired. But anyway, we're really appreciative of all your service, Grant, the things that you've done for our community and whether, you know, challenge camp alike, we always had our fun on challenge camp, those times away with these youth, always stress the relationship sometimes, but it was always a good time and it was always worth the effort. I would like to recognize Interior Chief Zudema, if you'd like to come up, chief, and provide any comments as well.
Welcome back to Garner, sir. Good to see you.
We'll give up the shade, you won't worry about that.
Thank you. I waited 26 years for this beard. Thank you, Chief Benz, I appreciate that. Mayor and council, good to be back, good to see you. Thanks for just a minute or two. So I got here in the end of 2009 and met Grant, actually at a hockey game, before I ever started working. And I've kiddingly said out loud before that that part of why I knew I'd landed in a good place was that I went to one of his tailgates and to say he knows how to tailgate would be an understatement. So he's a really good friend, but I want to speak about Sergeant Davis. So I met Investigator Davis when I got here and heard a lot of good things and immediately saw exactly what Chief Benz has described, tenacity, professional, dedicated, all those words you want to think of when you think about someone that does the right thing, it's Grant Davis. And as I got to know Grant, I thought that after, with talking with other people and seeing him work, that there might even be more there. So I talked to him at one point about the opportunity of potentially being promoted. He leapt at the chance, or not, but we promoted him to sergeant and he did nothing but continued to show us that, you know, not only was he a great cop and a great investigator, but he also grew into an amazing leader. And so I would tell you that I think Grant's legacy, you know, personally is in the room. His family is here and I think the world of them as well. But professionally, his legacy, I would argue, became not just his work as a cop and as an SRO and as a detective, but as a leader. And so you can't begin to count the number of people that have benefited from the leadership of Grant Davis. So I don't know if I did a lot of things right in my time in Garner, but promoting this man to sergeant was probably one of the best decisions I ever made and so you are unfortunately losing an incredible asset. But I would tell you that it is also really, really good to see people that have given their adult life to this community to be able to walk away happy and with their family and healthy and able to do other things. So I would just say congratulations and thank you.
As I present a gift from the town, I'm going to ask Grant if he'd like to come up and say a few words. You've got a speech written, right?
Mine's not as good as the ex chief's, sir. I'm still working on mine. I don't have a speech, so we'll make it real quick. I'm not good at this talking thing at all. It's been a wonderful career. I got to do a job that I always wanted to do, that I love to do. Maybe not every minute, but most minutes, I thoroughly enjoyed my job. I worked at a great police department with great leadership, both with Chief Zudema and with Chief Benz, and I got to work in this town, in the town that I live in. Couldn't have asked for a better career. I really appreciate all the very kind words today. Very, very, I don't know how to say it. It's been difficult and I've always thought when I was retiring that, you know, fun, exciting, can't wait to retire, and then when you do, you kind of sit around and you go, what's next? But there'll be something next, I don't know what, maybe a couple of months of nothing and then something, but I really appreciate the fact that I have been able to work and serve this town. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Manager, and I'm going to give any council members who'd like to have a chance to say a word or two, but before they do, Mr. Davis, I'm looking here at a definition in a dictionary I have that says, says "The act of retiring or leaving one's job, career, occupation permanently, usually because of age." That's a definition that you find in Webster. I've got to believe that that last part doesn't apply to you. I see these police officers coming here and they're all younger than I am. Of course, I'm older than a lot, so I guess that stands a reason, but certainly you have, hopefully, many good years ahead of you and I wish you well in retirement. I thank you and the town thanks you for your many years of faithful service. All the things I've heard about you and your position and the jobs that you've done have been very positive, so you're commendable, you're to be commended, sir, for your faithful service to the town and hope you continue to enjoy living in our town and I'm sure you'll still make many contributions to the citizens of Garner. So thank you very much for what you've done. And council member, if anybody wants to make a comment, you don't have to...
Just a brief comment, Mr. Mayor. You can always look back and know that you made a difference, which is very important. And being so-called semi-retired, that two months you're talking about will go away real quick because now people know you've got a lot of time on your hands and you're going to be asked to do a lot of things, so go hide. Congratulations again, thank you.
Okay, any council members here?
Yes. When I first moved to Garner and became active in community events and so forth, I knew just about the names of all the police officers then. That has changed over the years and now one more is leaving and I won't know who the new person's going to be, but Grant, we appreciate all your hard work. You will be missed. Try not to smirk too much when we see you and know that you're not having to worry there.
Okay, anyone else?
I guess I didn't have the pleasure to get to know you while you were here. I mean, I've been here for 20 years and on council for less than a year, but I think, thank you for your many, many years of service and I think when someone like you retires and the town gets to acknowledge your contribution, we all understand why Garner is a great place to be and it's because people like you've given everything to it and so we don't want to take that for granted or your time, so thank you very much.
Mr. Davis, thank you very much for your service and just echo what everyone else has said, it's because of the service of our police and public servants like yourself that we are great and Councilman Matthews is right, your phone is going to ring because your services are still going to be in need and we know you've got time now. So just get ready and if you don't answer, we know how to find you. Thank you very much.
Speaking of time, sir, I think it's proper to say, we don't expect you to spend your time here for the rest of the meeting this evening, but you're welcome to stay if you want to, but otherwise we'll see you around town, I'm sure.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. One last round of applause. Okay, council, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And while I do not wish to pull an item, I do want to make a quick comment and if anybody else needs to pull an item, and I assume you do not. Item three on the consent agenda has to do with the timber drive speed limit reduction. I'm personally pleased to see that particular action where the speed will be reduced from 45 to 35, I believe from Thompson Road back this way. We had a terrible accident out as you approached the neighborhood out there. When was it, about a month ago, so forth? But I drive that road fairly often and there are a lot of speeders out there, so I think reducing that and as we make the change in the crosswalk there going into the greenway extension, that's a good move, I believe. So pleased to see that. Yes, ma'am?
If I may add to that, I began asking questions probably four years ago about the possibility of making that speed uniform throughout along the whole way and I'm just real glad to see that it is happening now because that was a real problem and now it's going to be better, so.
Thank you. So a motion is in order to approve the consent agenda.
So I move, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's going the whole way, I just want to make sure we're...
Going from Thompson Road to where it picks up at Blanton Street, near the crosswalk.
There will be some 45, I just wanted to...
Yeah, yeah. On either end, I believe, as you get on...
Beyond there, going towards 70, it's still 45.
But the map is... So, yeah.
Yeah, but I think that particular area, it'll be good to slow things down. Okay, so let me see, I believe I had a motion and a second on the consent agenda, is that right? Did we vote yet? We haven't voted yet.
No.
Okay, so all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And of course, there is none, so thank you very much. Okay, we have next on our agenda, two, maybe three, public hearings. And so the first one is CUDZ 25 and a CUP SP 2005, 2337 US 70 Industrial. Let's see, before we start this hearing, I believe I need to read our instructions regarding a quasi-judicial hearing. Is that right, Mr. Attorney? Okay, "For the benefit of both council and the public, there are rules, there are some rules governing these hearings which are required by law that we must follow. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means it's more formal than other public hearings. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. I will now, at this time, inquire of the council whether any member has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or if there have been any ex parte communications, or if there are any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome. If any of those things apply, council should acknowledge that at this point in time." Are there any, council? Okay, hearing none, thank you. "This will be a fact-finding hearing and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as the basis for whatever decision the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. You are permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their actual testimony and council members are only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the cases outside of the hearing." And of course, we always ask speakers to respect the time that they're speaking in order to allow others to engage and to minimize repetitive testimony. So with that instruction, I will ask at this time, let me see, if you expect to be a witness and give testimony in this hearing at this point in time, if you would go see the clerk in this corner over here and be sworn, that would be greatly appreciated. Let's see, do we have somebody virtually, okay, Jeff?
Is it just Chris? Okay, if you could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So at this point in time, I'm going to declare that the public meeting is open and I will recognize town staff for their presentation and that would be Mr. Banford. Good evening.
And members of council, this is a conditional use rezoning application. There's also a companion site plan associated with this request. This request is a little unusual from other applications that you have received. This does not involve any new construction, so what happened was, there was a staff-level approval of an industrial building on Highway 70, which was, has also received a building permit. The building is almost completed with construction. A certificate of occupancy is very, is close. The applicant has a tenant that conflicts with the current zoning, so they've come back with a rezoning request to allow some outdoor storage options on the site. So we'll move forward with the presentation. So the address is 2337 US 70 East. The rezoning boundary is approximately 13.29 acres. A planning commission did hear this case on July the 20th and did recommend approval. This is a map of the rezoning site on Highway 70 East. This is in between Raynor Road, Auburn Nightdale Road, and Guy Road. This site is diagonal or northeast of Camping World on Highway 70. This map shows the current zoning. The property is Zone Industrial 1. There's a vacant tract to the north that's also Zone Industrial 1. To the west, we have service business. Farther to the west, we have Heavy Industrial 2. The railroad runs along the north side here. Directly to the east, we have a business park on Widespan Drive and that is zoned Heavy Industrial 2. There's some outdoor storage warehouse and there's also a couple vacant tracts out there as well. Directly across the street, we have some vacant land that's Zone R40. This is a list of rezoning cases for this area of Garner. The oldest case we found was from 1996 and this, that site is about a half mile west of this rezoning site. The most recent zoning case is the Garner ETJ expansion, the zoning case from 2017, where Garner picked up some land east of Auburn Nightdale Road, all the way out to the Johnson County, Wake County line. The current zoning is light industrial. It allows office, warehouse, flex space, retail sales, and all uses have to be inside an enclosed building, so no outdoor storage or no outdoor parking of equipment is permitted... an enclosed building, so no outdoor storage or no outdoor parking of equipment is permissible in the current zoning. The requested zoning is service business conditional use, and this district allows many of the same uses allowed in I-one. However, it does allow outdoor storage and outdoor operations. This is a conditional use request, so the applicant has narrowed the range of permissible uses from the service business list. Service business allows approximately seventy different uses. The applicant has narrowed that list down to the following. We have proposed uses under household living, which is a security or caretaker's quarters, uses under community service, daycares, educational facilities, government facilities, healthcare, religious institutions, and utilities. Permissible uses would also include uses under entertainment and medical office, commercial parking, restaurants, and that would include indoor and outdoor curb or drive-in. Also on the list is retail sales and service, and we will make note that this also includes outdoor operations for that use, banks and financial institutions, self-service storage, vehicle sales and service, manufacturing and production, however, this would be indoor only. Light industrial and manufacturing. This would allow the options for industrial use with outdoor operations, warehouse and freight movement, wholesale sales, and waste-related services. Examples would be recyclable materials collection centers. Transportation, Highway seventy is a major thoroughfare maintained by NC DOT. It's four lanes. The right-of-way is two hundred feet wide, and this is a, this chart shows the NC DOT annual average daily traffic counts for this area of Garner, with twenty-five thousand trips per day in two thousand nine and twenty-nine thousand five hundred trips per day in two thousand eighteen. The site plan that was approved at staff level did not require a traffic impact analysis. There is a large vacant tract behind this site, and when that develops, that could trigger that, but for the site that was approved at staff level, a traffic impact analysis was not required. This conditional rezoning did require a neighborhood meeting, and this was held virtually on June the twenty-third with approximately one adjoining property owner in attendance. There was a call-in period, and nobody called in at that time. The questions revolved around the location of public sewer, the zoning of adjoining properties, and questions about the proposed NC five forty outer loop, which will be crossing Highway seventy about an eighth of a mile west of this site. There's more information in your staff report on the neighborhood meeting. Moving to the Garner Forward Plan, we will look at the future land use map, and then we'll look at the guiding principles. The future land use map designates this corridor on the north side of seventy between Auburn Nightdale Road and Guy Road as light industrial center, and under this category, the plan would recommend warehouse, industrial flex space, light manufacturing, distribution, also medical research, laboratory, and assembly operations. Working places. This is discussed in the Garner Forward Plan on pages sixty-eight through seventy-two, and staff finds that this request is in support of the following. The plan states on page sixty-nine, "Don't wait for lightning to strike. Proactively seek out companies and businesses. People want to see more in Garner. Examples: restaurants, industrial." Garner needs more industrial flex space to meet current demands. This rezoning would allow industrial flex space uses along this commercial corridor while providing jobs that benefit Garner. The plan states on page seventy, "Smaller, leaner, and cleaner manufacturing and industry, often mixed with offices and even ground-floor retailing, are becoming the most attractive options for many communities that want to have higher wages. This rezoning would allow a mix of uses, including office, retail, and industrial." This is the range of uses that the applicant has proposed. On page sixty-eight, the plan states, "Understand utility demands associated with development. This rezoning and associated development will extend public sewer from the west, and this will provide opportunities for more commercial and industrial development along this corridor, providing jobs and tax space to Garner." Zoning consistency statement. Based on the proceeding, staff offers that the requested rezoning from light industrial I-one to service business conditional use District two-thirty is consistent with the Garner Forward land use map, and is also consistent with the guiding principles of working places. And staff will also note that the proposed zoning change is also consistent with the zoning pattern in this area. That concludes the zoning portion of this presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and then I will move on and go through the site plan for you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bamford. I appreciate it. I'm going to start to my left here and recognize Mr. Matthews, if he has any questions.
I don't have anything right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir. No, it's his time.
Okay, moving this way, Ms. Behringer?
None.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Just a recommendation for any property that's in that five forty corridor to have an overlay, so we can see its relative position. So it's like an eighth of a mile.
Is your question, is this property within that proposed overlay?
I'm saying, you said it's within an eighth of a mile of...
That was just an estimate, just to give you an idea that the site is east of the proposed NC five forty, which is going on the other side of Conica Menolta, which is a few parcels down.
My only recommendation is to include the five forty route on properties that are sort of within striking distance.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
No questions at the moment?
Okay, none. All right, Mr. Town Manager?
David, can you clarify the site boundaries for the rezoning? Our agenda report has a much larger site than what you're showing. I think, I think it just includes the building and maybe a little extra for parking. The report has, I think, all the land that that applicant owns highlighted, so I just wanted counsel to be clear.
So the rezoning boundary should be approximately thirteen point two-nine acres, which is outlined in red on this map, and there is a larger, you know, site behind it, but the rezoning site is only outlined in red on this map.
Are you refer, I'm looking at the map on page thirty-one or the depiction?
Correct, correct.
And it does show a larger land mass there, obviously, than what we see here.
I just wanted to make sure y'all are clear that it's just rezoning that portion and not the rest.
Those two houses were ratcheted around to the back then?
No.
Okay. Okay, support were made, thank you.
One more, I have one question. That larger parcel behind on the conditional, does it have two zonings on that single parcel?
The large parcel behind the site?
Yeah.
It is zoned, it should be zoned, let's see, that is correct. It has split zoning. This used to be a separate tract of land. I believe it was recombined through a plat process, so it is split zoning.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Bamford? Do we have anybody else who's going to testify on the rezoning at this point, or are you going to the site plan?
Staff would just make the comment that there needs to be a separate public hearing for the zoning portion, and then a separate one for the site plan.
Okay.
So however you want to break that up, either now or at the end of the presentation.
Okay. Should we go ahead and vote on this part, Mr. Baggett, or...
Either way, you can vote now.
Anybody else planning to testify on the zoning issue? Okay, please state your name and address, if you will.
Yes, sir. My name is Justin Parker. I'm with the applicant Al Nyer, forty-five oh-nine Creedmore Road, Suite two oh-one, Raleigh, North Carolina, two-seven-six-one-two. I just wanted to, on behalf of the applicant, just thank town council for your request of this consideration this evening. I also wanted to thank staff, David, Jeff, and their team for their support of the project and their hard work on the project thus far. And I do have additional team members with me this evening as well, Mike Kane, our civil engineer with Capital Civil, and Robbie Lawson with Williams Mullen, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions throughout David's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, we'll hold you in reserve in case we need you on the site plan, I guess, perhaps. Okay, thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Counsel, are you comfortable in going ahead and, excuse me, voting on the rezoning motion before we move to the, to the site plan? I think we've done that.
Previously, Mr. Mayor, we've always heard both and then voted one and two.
Okay, well, I guess you're right. It's been a little while since. All right, so, very good. Mr. Bamford, go ahead and lead us through the discussion.
Okay, as previously stated, this industrial building was approved at staff level. The case number was SP eighteen dash fifteen, and I believe it was approved on March the night, I'm sorry, March the eleventh, two thousand nineteen. The size of the building is a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, and a building permit was issued on September twentieth, two thousand nineteen, and it's close to a certificate of occupancy. I think there's a couple final inspections that need to be done. We will not go through the details of the plan, like landscaping and utilities and things like that, but we will show you the overall site layout of the plan with the building that's located here. There's some parking in the rear, and I believe that the applicants wish to maybe add some outdoor storage or parking in the rear back here behind the building, which would not be visible from Highway seventy, and the current I-one zoning would not allow that. So that's the reason for the request, and this would also be the location of any outdoor storage of equipment or trucks. There is a stormwater facility that's located in the front, so there is no room to put any outdoor storage or anything in the front of the building, plus the Highway seventy overlay district would prohibit that unless it was in the rear. Planning Commission did review this request at their meeting on July twentieth. With a unanimous vote, Planning Commission confirmed staff findings that the site plan is in conformity with the adopted town plans and policies, and further accepted by unanimous staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, which was detailed in Section Five of the report as their own and recommended approval of zoning case CUDZ twenty dash zero-five to the town council. Staff's recommendations for rezoning and site plan conformity are highlighted in the motion worksheet in the next section, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. I do have the full site plan available to pull up if you want to go there, but the motion is on the slide.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Bamford. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Bamford as relates to his presentation now on the site plan? I'll start to my right with Mr. Vance.
I do not have any questions.
Mr. Dellinger?
Is this property located in the town or the ETJ?
This property was, it's located in the town limits. This was annexed recently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer? Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews? Okay. Through with your presentation. Was anybody else planning to testify for the applicant at this point? Hearing and seeing none. I'm going to, let's see, is anybody else here wish to speak to this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion from counsel.
Mayor, in regards to the zoning portion of this item, CUDZ twenty dash oh-five, I move that the town council accept the staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. Detailed, Section Five of the staff report as their own, and I therefore move further for the town council adopt ordinance twenty twenty four zero six eight, approving the zoning request CUD dash Z dash twenty dash zero five, and it is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely allow for the construction of appropriate industrial and commercial projects on this property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton, and the motion was seconded by Mr. Matthews. Okay, we have a motion properly before us. Counsel, before I ask you to vote, I ask if there are any other comments or questions you wish to mention at this time? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion as made and presented, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none, so the motion on the rezoning carries, is approved. So now I believe a motion is in order in regards to the second item, CUP SP twenty-oh-five. A motion would be in order at this time.
Mr. Mayor, move the council accept the staff's statements regarding planning consistency in Section Seven of this report as their own, and finally, the application meets the ten permit criteria in Section three point one, four point D, therefore approving CUP dash SP dash two zero dash oh-five. The address two thirty, excuse me, two-three-three-seven US Highway seventy east industrial, with no additional conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Seconded? Made and properly seconded by Mr. Matthews and/or Mr. Vance. Okay, any question, comments, counsel, before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion that's properly before us, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none, so the motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Bamford. See, are you next up as well? Is this item two, I guess, right? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing and recognize Mr. Bamford for staff report.
Mayor, members of counsel, this is an annexation that is related to the next case, Edge of Auburn. This site is currently located in Wake County. It's not in Garner's town limits or ETJ. So in order for this site to be rezoned, it has to be annexed first. So staff will make the comment, or make the suggestion that counsel hear the presentation and hold the public hearing, and then delay the vote or the action until the next items are heard. And then the order would be a vote on the annexation, a vote on the rezoning, and then a vote on the master plan. If that makes...
Okay.
If that makes, okay. So this site is located at the southeast corner of Rock Quarry Road and Old Bakem Road. It has frontage on both of those roads. It's in the eastern part of Garner. This is a boundary map that the applicant has provided showing the boundary of the annexation. We also have a legal meets and bounds description, which I believe is in the ordinance. This is annexation case 20-14. Project is Edge of Auburn. This is a satellite annexation. It involves several tracts of land. The total acreage is 298.5 acres. It is in Wake County R-30 zoning currently. We do have a rezoning case to rezone this to Town of Garner, PRD, C-10. And the recommendation is to adopt the annexation ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And again, staff suggests that council hold the public hearing and then delay the action or vote until after the zoning and master plan cases are heard.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Bamford as relates to the annexation?
I do. This is a question.
Sure. Mr. Dellinger.
How often is, does this type of procedure happen in this order with regards to an annexation for a property that's outside of the ETJ?
It does not happen a whole lot. We have had several cases. I believe down at McCullers, 1010 Road and 401, where the sheaths and the Walgreens are located, I believe that was a case where that came, that was in Wake County's jurisdiction, and they wanted to develop and rezone into Garner, and that had to go through. The annexation had to track along with the zoning and site plan. There has been a couple of other cases around town. Nothing comes to mind right now.
I'm just curious, like, we approved some in the consent agenda that they were approved and developed, and we just did the annexation, so I'm curious as to why.
Right, so if the project site is currently in our ETJ, has a Town of Garner zoning, the annexation can be delayed until after the project is approved or rezoned. And the drop dead time for annexation would be when they would come in, either for a building permit or at plat approval, to start recording lots.
And the annexation here, it's, get your recommendation, it seems to subdivide that piece of property as well? Is that also happening?
Are you asking about a subdivision? This annexation does not subdivide. It includes the parcel pins. We also have a legal meets and bounds of the whole boundary of the annexation site. So if this project were approved and rezoned, then they'd come in at a later time to subdivide the larger tract into single-family and townhome lots. They might do a recombination first and then subdivide, but there's no subdivision associated with the annexation.
But this annexation is not for this entire piece of property?
It is, it is. Whoops.
Can you, does this property line not go all the way to that corner where that intersection is?
So the annexation boundary does not include this entire tract of land. It only includes the project, the master plan, and rezoning boundary, which is outlined in orange. So the, with the NC 540 project, Old Bakem Road will be realigned along this boundary, and the applicants are reserving this area for future development, possibly for commercial. So this, this corner is not being rezoned, not being annexed, and is not part of the master plan before you tonight.
Okay.
Anything else from counsel on the annexation?
So the parcel will have split, it'll be split with the town limits, but it won't necessarily split or subdivide the land into two tracts.
How do you tax that?
Yeah, so Wake County will assign a separate tax ID number to the portion that's outside the town limits and then to the portion that's inside. So they will separate it on their end with a different parcel pin and real estate ID. And a similar case would be the Jürgen property that was purchased by the town on East Garner Road. That was one tract of land, but the southern portion was annexed and the northern portion was not. And Wake County had assigned a different tax number to each side.
Okay. Anything else from counsel on the annexation? I believe you said we're going to move right on into the presentation on the next portion?
That's correct. You can hold the public hearing and then close it, and then we can move to the next item.
Okay.
And then, and just then delay the vote until after the presentation on the next case.
Okay, so we've covered the annexation now, right?
Right.
Okay. So I'm going to open the public hearing on the zoning presentation?
Just the annexation.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Okay. I believe I've closed that one, and now we're going to begin the second one. Am I right? I don't want to get confused here, Mr. Baggett.
Did he open it for the annexation?
I think he opened it and closed it with the same, same mic gab over here.
I think, I think I failed probably to formally do that when he started, so I guess I would open and close it if I formally need to do that, but I think I failed to do that.
Mr. Mayor, you did open it.
Oh, did I? Okay, okay.
Did you ask if anybody wants to speak?
Perhaps.
It's for the annexation. I know it's probably hard for me.
That's right, yeah, okay. Are there persons here who wish to speak to the annexation portion of this presentation? I don't believe I saw or heard anybody. Okay. So can I formally close it at this point in time, I think? Okay, so we're going to close that particular portion of the hearing, and we will now open the rezoning portion of the hearing. Is that correct? So that portion is now open. By the way, did I, I know we had some people who were sworn in on the first presentation. Are there persons here who expect to give sworn testimony that need to be sworn at this time?
Some did come from upstairs, so there may be.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, they've been sworn.
Everybody's been sworn for this hearing as well? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bamford, I believe we're ready for you for your presentation on this section, right?
Mayor, members of council, this is a conditional rezoning with a conditional master plan. The name of the project is Edge of Auburn, and it's located on the east side of Rock Quarry Road, on the south side of Old Bakem. The track, or the project size is approximately 298.5 acres. The Planning Commission did review this item at their meeting on July the 20th. This is a vicinity map of the boundary of the rezoning and master plan, outlined in orange. Rock Quarry Road runs along the western boundary, and Old Bakem Road runs along the north. Highway 70 is located to the south, and East Garner Road also runs along the south with the intersection of East Garner and Rock Quarry located south of the site. The applicant has excluded some of that land on the corner, so that area on the corner is not part of the rezoning, not part of the annexation, or not part of the master plan at this time. It's being reserved for possible future commercial. And so this shows the rezoning site looking south on Rock Quarry Road. The rezoning site and boundary is located here. It is not located here on the corner. This is looking north on Rock Quarry Road, and the rezoning site is over on the right side, on the east side, and it's vacant, undeveloped, and heavily vegetated. This map shows the zoning of this area. Everything in this yellow or tan is Wake County R-30 zoning. So Garner's jurisdiction is on the west side of Rock Quarry Road. On the west side, we have Town of Garner R-40 zoning. And then to the south, we also have some commercials zoning. The previous case, that site is located here with frontage along Highway 70, and then East Garner Road runs to the south, and that goes into Johnston County. The predominant land use in this area is farmland, agriculture, with scattered residential single-family on Old Bakem and also Ranch, or is that Branch? I think that's Branch Road. And we also have some single-family uses down around, near the, in the vicinity of the intersection of Guy Road and East Garner Road. We don't have a history of zoning cases in this area, other than the Town of Garner ETJ expansion in 2017, which expanded out from Auburn-Nightdale Road east over to Rock Quarry Road and stopped on the west, the west side of Rock Quarry Road. So everything on the east side of Rock Quarry is still in Wake County's zoning jurisdiction. The existing zoning is Wake County R-30, and this is a low-density, single-family zoning. Density is around 1.45 units per acre, and this allows single-family duplexes, and commercial uses are also allowed in R-30 in Wake County with a special use permit. The requested zoning classification is Planned Residential Development Conditional Use District 10. And under this zoning, this is, this is an option to encourage mixing of housing options and density in return for additional buffering, landscaping, and open space. And the PRD development option is available on tracts of at least 15 acres, 15 contiguous acres. Under this proposal, 898 units are proposed, and that breaks down to 696 single-family and 202 townhomes. And this is at a density of 2.7 units per acre. The next several slides will be the conditions proposed by the applicant. Permissible uses would be restricted to townhomes and single-family. The applicant has also proposed a list of site and architectural conditions. So while the actual proposal on the master plan is 2.7 units per acre, the rezoning conditions would allow a density to not exceed 3.1 units per acre, with a maximum of 910 dwelling units. Of the 910 dwelling units, a maximum of 210 shall be townhomes. So there's a difference between what's proposed and the master plan versus the, what's proposed and the zoning conditions, which would allow just a little more flexibility as far as density. A homeowner's association would be required. The applicant is also proposing some deviations of lot sizes. And the chart on this page, more deviations are requested. This would include front, rear, and side setbacks. This would be for the single-family front-loaded, the single-family rear-loaded, the townhome front-loaded, and the townhome rear-loaded. So under the PRD, you look at your, you start out with your base requirements under R-12, and then the applicant is allowed to ask for deviations from that. So these two columns here is what they're asking for, for single-family, and then these two columns over here, those are what they're asking for, for the townhome deviations. And again, this, this is just for front, rear, side, corner side, and building separations. Other conditions proposed, the main amenity shall be, shall begin construction upon receiving the first certificate of occupancy on the model homes in Phase 1, and shall be completed within 18 months. And a pole with a minimum 2,000 square feet and a cabana with a minimum 1,775 square feet are proposed. Number eight, all townhomes shall have at least a one-car garage. All single-family homes shall have at least a two-car garage. All housing types shall be a minimum of .045 gauge vinyl siding. If masonry is not the predominant first-floor finish, then front elevation shall have two types of vinyl siding, example, lap and shake or board and batton. Number 10, at a minimum, all single-family homes and townhomes shall have at least 24-inch stone masonry water table on front facade. Number 11, all slab foundations with an exposed height of greater than 12 inches shall be finished with masonry product, and this applies to the front and side elevations with right, with right-of-way frontage. All slab foundations with an exposed height of 12 inches or less shall be textured with parjing and painting to match siding material, and this applies to the front and side elevations. Number 12, garage doors for all townhomes shall have carriage door hardware or windows. Garage doors for single-family homes shall have carriage door hardware and windows. Number 13, elevations with a cantilever front elevation accent shall have decorative brackets or shelf supports for single-family homes. 14, all homes shall have a minimum 8-inch eaves on the front and rear facade with a minimum 8-inch roof overhang on all sides. 15, a covered front porch, a minimum 20 square feet shall be provided on, as part of all dwellings. 16, shutters or window trim shall be provided on the front facade of all dwellings, inside facades of all townhome dwellings with right-of-way frontage. 17, an outdoor deck or patio, a minimum 40 square feet is required as part of all townhome dwelling units. For single-family, an outdoor deck or patio, minimum of 64 square feet will be required. 19, all dwelling units shall have at least one window on each side elevation. This excludes interior townhome units. So that concludes the list of conditions of moving into transportation. This is a list of NC DOT annual average daily traffic counts on these two roads, going back to 2007. 2007, Rock Quarry Road had 4,600 trips per day. 2017, it's 5,100 trips per day. Old Bakem Road in 2007 had 1,100 trips per day. And... Old Bakem Road in 2007 had 1,100 trips per day, and NC DOT did not have any information for 17. I will say that NC, that the NC DOT traffic counts for 2019 should be available sometime this year. We don't have those available yet.
A quick question.
Sure.
Were Garner Road numbers not calculated in that? I know there are some, some of the improvements extend down to Garner Road. Were there not traffic counts done on Garner Road?
There may be. We just didn't, didn't have any in this chart. What we normally do is just provide the traffic counts along the road frontages. So if a site has frontage, this site has frontage on Old Bakem, then we included that. We, we usually don't go out any farther than that. The TIA does obviously include East Garner Road, but our chart does not.
Do we have the numbers that are from that TIA for Garner Road?
I don't know if I have that or not. I, I will go through the, the traffic improvements that are proposed, but I don't believe it gets into, the full document might get, might have that number, but I don't have that. Any other questions before I move? Moving to the, the improvements with the traffic impact analysis, these are off-site roadway improvements that are proposed as part of this project. And under Rock Quarry Road and Auburn-Nightdale Road intersection, number one, construct an exclusive northbound left-turn lane on Rock Quarry Road at Auburn-Nightdale Road with an appropriate storage and tapers. Number two, construct an exclusive southbound right-turn lane on Rock Quarry Road at Auburn-Nightdale Road with appropriate storage and taper. Number three, provide traffic signal modifications to accommodate the above laneage. For Rock Quarry Road and Old Bakem Road intersection, construct an exclusive southbound left-turn lane on Rock Quarry Road at Old Bakem Road with appropriate storage and tapers. Rock Quarry Road, widen Rock Quarry Road through the project frontage to provide one-half of a four-lane median divided cross-section in general accordance with the town's comprehensive transportation plan to include exclusive southbound left-turn lanes with appropriate storage and tapers at both site drives. In parentheses, it says, payment in lieu of median construction may be requested. For Rock Quarry Road and East Garner Road intersection, construct an exclusive eastbound left-turn lane on East Garner Road at Rock Quarry Road with appropriate storage and tapers. Construct, number seven, construct an exclusive southbound right-turn lane on Rock Quarry Road at East Garner Road with appropriate storage and taper. Eight, install a traffic signal to accommodate the above laneage. East Garner Road and Ballot Road intersection, construct an exclusive eastbound left-turn lane on East Garner Road at Ballot Road with appropriate storage and taper. And finally, Old Bakem Road, West Site Drive, construct an exclusive eastbound right-turn lane on Old Bakem Road at the West Site Drive with appropriate storage and tapers. Moving to the neighborhood meeting. This was held on February 18th at Mount Mariah Baptist Church. There were approximately 58 neighbors in attendance. There were quite a few questions, and this is detailed in your staff report, questions about traffic impacts, roadway construction into Stony Creek subdivision, what was the build-out, questions about open space, questions about the homeowners association, amenities, public utilities, stormwater, buffering, annexation, home price points, questions about slab or crawl space construction, what were their percentages of townhome and single-family, and questions about electric lines and how this compares to the Auburn Village community, and also questions about road improvements. Moving to the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, we will look at the future land use map, and then we'll go into the guiding principles. So approximately 181.6 acres of the project site is designated as mixed-density neighborhood center. And under this designation, the plan calls for over 2.5 units per acre, and this could include a mix of single-family townhomes or apartments. 116.9 acres of the project site is designated as medium-density residential. And under this designation, apartments is not part of a possible use. It's limited to townhomes and single-family at a density of 2.5 to no more than five units an acre. Moving to the living spaces, guiding principles of Garner Ford. On page 63, the plan states Garner recognizes that its housing stock is aging, and that it can be more diverse to attract younger residents and retain older ones. Page 63. This zone diversifies lot sizes, incorporates alley and rear garage products, and provides exterior maintenance free choices for owners. The plan states on page, also on page 63, the younger and older residents, millennials and boomers, respectively, share many of the same desires in a living space. This would include proximity to shopping and services and an appreciation for greenways and fun places to gather. This zone provides for approximately 2.7 miles of trails and greenways, as well as a main pool amenity, a dog park, a neighborhood park, one pocket park, a gazebo park, and a townhome park amenity. The plan states on page 64, in greenfield areas favoring larger master plan tracks helps to maximize private contributions and amenities, which is also a recommended practice. This zone provides for approximately 2, 2.7 miles of trails and greenways, as well as a main pool amenity, a dog park, a neighborhood park, one pocket park, a gazebo park, and a townhome park amenity. The plan states on page 65, mixing housing types within a development allows the proposed townhomes and single-family detached homes to live compatibly as they are clustered and share similar design characteristics. This zone mixes and clusters four primary different housing types throughout the community. You have single-family front-loaded, single-family rear-loaded, townhome front-loaded, and also townhome rear-loaded. Moving to recreational opportunities and guiding principles. On page 76, the plan states, in addition to large projects, small parklets and small connections between neighborhoods should be priorities to soften perspectives and communicate a human scale for pedestrians. This zone offers sidewalks along internal streets, greenway and trail connections linking all parts of the neighborhood to many parks and to the larger neighborhood parks and amenities. Page 77, the plan states, a stated purpose of the PRD zone is to conserve and preserve natural features and green space, which is a recommended practice for promoting recreation opportunities. This zone provides for a total of approximately 81.73 acres of open space for conservation. Out of this total, approximately 69.73 acres are designated as passive open space and 12 acres as active recreation. Page 78, the Garner Ford plan states, parks play a vital role in neighborhood life, providing a place for children to play and residents to meet. This includes pocket parks, areas of a quarter acre or less. While this zone provides for several large-scale amenities and open spaces over an acre in size, one small pocket, a pocket park is provided in the southeastern portion of the Moving to the zoning consistency statement. The requested rezoning from Wake County's single-family R-30 to Plan, to Town of Garner Plan Residential District Conditional Use District 10 is consistent with the Garner Ford Plan's guiding principles of living spaces and recreational opportunities, and the request is also consistent with the, with the density range recommended on the future land use map. Again, the, the density proposed on the plan is 2.7. The zoning conditions would allow a maximum density up to, I believe, 3.1. So that concludes the rezoning presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Stacy will pick up and go through the details of the master plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanford. Need to take a breath, I guess. Lot of stuff presented. All right, counsel, questions for Mr. Vanford? I'll just throw it open to counsel. I won't call on particular ones if there are any. None here, none here.
This the largest, what's the largest subdivision we've ever approved in Garner?
I do not know the answer. I will give you some of the larger ones that we have approved. Auburn Village, I believe, is, is a fairly large one. Oak Park West, off of New Bethel Church Road. George's Landing off of Highway 401. So all of these are PRD-type developments. Those are, are just a few.
Eagle Ridge.
Eagle Ridge was approved in the late 90s, and I believe that has about 900, 800 to 900 single-family lots.
Got to be one of the largest, I would think, sure enough.
And some townhomes.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Vanford? Let's see, I don't guess anybody else is gonna give testimony as relates to this. Stacy, you're up now.
You ready to do the subdivision plan portion?
I believe so, unless anybody wanted to give testimony as relates to the, to the rezoning. Okay, sir?
Also, can I, I have the figure that you were asking about on Garner Road. In 2018, it was 8,400 vehicles.
Eighty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, please state your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. My name is Collier Marsh. I'm the land use attorney representing the applicant in this matter. I'm with Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein at 301 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. This hearing is broken up into two portions, the rezoning and the quasi-judicial portion. We're happy to handle it in whatever way is the most efficient, to the extent there's public comment that's interested in the rezoning. I'm prepared to have remarks on the rezoning separately from the quasi-judicial portion, but would, would leave that to the council, or if there is input that needs to come from the public beforehand.
Is anyone else gonna testify besides yourself for the applicant?
We have witnesses prepared to testify on the quasi-judicial portion, transportation engineers, an appraiser, and civil engineer and site planning. So we are intending to have the majority of the presentation in the quasi-judicial portion and do a, a summary of the high notes in the rezoning portion.
Okay. Let me see, Mr. Bag, is there any reason why they couldn't take place now?
No, sir. You can go ahead and do it that way.
Okay. I think we'll go with the presentation at this time.
Would you like to do the, the whole presentation with engineers and, or should we let, let me preempting this?
Mayor, I think that's the simplest way, particularly for those interested who have comments about the development, rather than ask them to speak about the rezoning or about the quasi-judicial. Just have the applicant describe it all, and then the other folks who want to speak can say whatever they want to, and their remarks will affect one or the other or both.
Okay.
But they'll all be sworn, so they can be considered together.
Sure.
We need to give the staff presentation first, or do anything else?
Yeah, we do the staff first.
All right, we're gonna do it.
We'll, we'll let Stacy go first, and then we'll hear from, from the applicant.
Okay. Back up to present the subdivision plan conformity section. Again, this is 298.5 acres with 898 lots. You see those broken down between single-family and townhomes there. There are varying lot sizes for the different products. Each product has a letter numerator, kind of to distinguish them, ranging from 4,400 square feet to 8,450 with the front-loaded single-family, and then there's a single-family rear-loaded product that's 5,022 square feet, minimum lot size. Then you also have a front-load and a rear-load townhome product as well. The setbacks, as you see there, there is a 25-foot perimeter setbacks, as is, was, is standard with PRDs. The front-load, single families with 20 in the front, 15 in the rear, five foot on the side, and eight foot for corner side for setbacks. For the rear-load, they're pushed up closer to the street, so it's five foot in the front, 20 in the rear, five foot on the side, and eight foot on the corner side. And then again, for townhomes, there's a front-load product, which is further back from the street, with 20 feet in the front, 15 in the rear, five feet on the end units of the townhomes, and eight feet on a corner side. And there's also a rear-load product that brings it up closer to the street again, with five feet front, front setback, 20 in the rear, five feet on the end unit, and eight feet on the corner side. The tree coverage requirement of 12% is to be met with existing plant material. The plan states that there'll be a minimum of 12.4% preserved tree cover. There's no street buffers required. However, street trees are required and provided every 40 feet on average. 25% open space is required with a PRD. That is almost 75 acres in this case. They're providing 81.73 acres of open space, or 27%. The site also has a pedestrian circulation system of sidewalks and trails. This site does have several amenities as well. The development's main amenity will be located on a 3.4-acre tract and will include a pool, clubhouse, lawn games, flexible lawn space, a pavilion, a playground, and seating areas. There'll be a 1.8-acre dog park, provided with a walking trail inside the fenced area. There will be an 8.7-acre neighborhood park on the eastern side of the development. This area will include a walking trail, flexible lawn area, a nine-hole disc-off course, and a sand volleyball court. Along the western edge, there's a gazebo park planned with a walking trail near the pond and a board, boardwalk over the wetland area. There will be two other passive open space areas. One is a linear park with trails in the townhome area and a pocket park in the southeastern part of the development. There's also over 12,000 linear feet of greenways and trails throughout the development. The inspections department, together with the Fire The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and approved this plan. There is no FEMA-designated floodplain on the site, but the site is impacted by riparian buffers, as you see there. The site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen, as well as quantity requirements for the one, 10, and 25-year storm events. This development plan proposes eight stormwater wet retention ponds to treat impervious surface for nitrogen, and all water quantity requirements to ensure stormwater requirements are met as part of the development. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required as part of this development. The site will be served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Infrastructure. Utilities will be extended from the Auburn Village subdivision on Auburn-Niddell Road. For roads and sidewalks, this site is directly adjacent to the future I-540. Due to the construction of I-540, Old Baucham Road will be realigned just east of Rock Quarry. Along the frontage of the project, Rock Quarry will be widened to a thoroughfare section with curb gutter and sidewalk installed. Old Baucham will be widened to a major collector. The south side of Old Baucham will have a 10-foot multi-use path in lieu of sidewalk. This multi-use path will tie into the roadway and greenway network. The subdivision will have two entrances onto Rock Quarry and two entrances onto Old Baucham. There's also a required connection to an existing stub street at Gerardo Way. There you see the site plan with a few things called out. To orient you, Old Baucham is at the top, and Rock Quarry is at the left side of your screen. The main amenity is on the north side, you see pointed out there. The dog park just below that, a little bit to the right, and the neighborhood park, which is the largest of the parks, is to the right on the southeast portion. And then, in the townhome section, you see over that area, the gazebo park as well. The greenway trail is also highlighted there in green, showing how it connects to the new screenway, and then over to Auburn Village on the northwest side. For parking, each dwelling unit is required to have two parking spaces. Townhomes are also required to have one space for every four units for guest parking, and we will be reviewing that at the preliminary plan stage. Lighting, both street and parking lot lighting will be reviewed for compliance prior to the approval of each preliminary plan. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends Rock Quarry as a four-lane divided facility. The plan does not provide any recommendations for pedestrian or bicycle facilities. With the proposed road improvements being coordinated with the NC-540 improvements, this project, as proposed, may be found to be in conformity with the recommendation of the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan revealed no additional recommendations in the project area that are any longer a priority for the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department. Therefore, with the inclusion of the proposed greenway, this project may be found to be in conformity with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance, so long as the following project conditions are met. One, prior to receipt of approved plans, the engineering department inspection fees must be paid to the town. Two, prior to recordation of the first final plat, a voluntary annexation petition shall be filed, of which we've, obviously have that in hand at this point now. Documents establishing a homeowners association and restrictive covenants shall be submitted to the planning director for review. The main amenity shall begin construction upon receiving the certificate of occupancy on the model homes in Phase One, and shall be completed within 18 months. Prior to issuance of the first building permit, all applicable water and sewer fees must be paid to the City of Raleigh, and the stormwater program administrator shall be in receipt of proof of payment for the required nitrogen offset payment to an approved mitigation bank. Prior to the recording of the final plat for each phase, amenities in the preceding phase shall be complete, and prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy in the final phase, amenities in said final phase shall be complete. Prior to the issuance of each building permit, any outstanding fee in lieu of parkland dedication, following dedication of the public greenway easements, shall be paid to the Town of Garner, and the developer shall be responsible for all roadway improvements required by NC DOT. The Planning Commission did review this request at their July 20th meeting. By unanimous vote, the Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings in Section 7, that PD MP 1905, Edge of Auburn, is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. The Commission further accepted staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with a Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, being detailed in Section 5 of the report, as their own, and recommended approval of PDZ 1905 to the Town Council by unanimous vote. Commission members did encourage the developer to consider paving their private trails and looking at more private connections to the public greenway. The motions for the rezoning start on page 83 of your packet, and on page 85 for the master plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and as stated, the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions for Stacy at this point? Okay, hearing none. Why don't we hear from the applicant at this time, I believe? Collier, I believe it was.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. Again, I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein, 301 Fayetteville Street, and I'm the land use attorney representing the applicant in this matter. We appreciate staff's presentation, obviously very thorough and covered a lot. We're gonna do our best not to repeat everything that staff said. However, because there is a quasi-judicial aspect of this, we want to make sure to get all the necessary evidence into the record. But we've tried to organize our presentation in as efficient a manner as possible, so I'm gonna start by hitting some of the high notes, and then we'll call up some of our expert witnesses to address the details of the plan. If, at any point, it's difficult to understand me because of this mask, please let me know. I'm gonna do my best to keep it on, and respect for the others in attendance, but please do let me know. I want to make sure that my presentation is clear to the council. So, again, this is Edge of Auburn. It's a planned residential development, and there are two phases to the presentation. I will start with the rezoning portion. Unfortunately, we haven't had the opportunity to meet with counsel to present this project yet due to the quasi-judicial nature of this case, but what we have had is a great working relationship with the town staff. This project was filed roughly one year ago. It's gone through six rounds of submissions. We've taken staff's feedback and made changes to the project. We think that staff's input has made this a better project, and so we appreciate the cooperation with the town on this project. This is the property shown on this slide. It's southeast of the intersection of Old Baucham Road and Rock Quarry Road, just under 300 acres, currently in Wake County's jurisdiction, and currently ZR-30 within Wake County, but we're proposing to annex it and rezone it to a planned residential development. For the rezoning portion, I just want to highlight a couple defining features of the project, and the things that we're most excited about are the open spaces and amenities that are provided with this project, the greenways and the pedestrian connectivity that's provided, and then, last but certainly not least, the high-quality homes that we've proposed. With any rezoning, I like to start with the future land use map and talk about consistency with town's plans. Here, we have the property outlined in black, and it actually has two future land use designations. The first is a mixed-density neighborhood center, and the second is medium-density residential, but they really speak to the same things, which is a mixture of residential types and density between two and a half and five acres. And so what we've proposed in this project is exactly that. We've proposed a mixture of single-family residences and townhomes, and then different types of each of those. And our proposed density is 2.7 acres, or 2.7 units per acre, so right within what's proposed in the future land use map. I also think it's important to look at this map and see what else is called for in the general area, and why this is such an important area for Garner. You see the future I-540 corridor running through the map outlined in orange, and there's a lot of other stuff that's contemplated in the area to the northwest of our parcel. It's planned to be a mixed-activity center, and then in the brown, and it doesn't stand out quite as well at the portion I'm looking at, but there's a dark brown below that mixed-activity center, and that's actually high-density residential. So, there's a lot projected and planned for this area, and we hope to be one of the first parts to, helping to fulfill Garner's vision for this area. So, the first defining feature are the open spaces and the amenities that we proposed. There is over 81.73 acres of open space proposed in this development. Of that open space, we're going to preserve over 37 acres of existing tree coverage, and those 37 acres are largely in the existing riparian areas, so existing streams and woodlands around those riparian areas would be preserved under this plan. There's also a perimeter setback around the outside of the property. It's a minimum of 25 feet wide, and a lot of places you'll see that it's quite a bit larger in the corners and in those riparian areas. The setback from adjacent properties is significant. On this map, you will also see the six parks and amenity areas. They're in a brighter green that pops a little bit. There's space throughout the project, so that everybody within this neighborhood and every section has convenient and local access to its own park or amenity area. And so, this slide just shows some of those parks and amenities that we've proposed. On the left-hand side is the main amenity for the development. It's about three and a half acres, and would have a clubhouse, and pool, and lawn space, and typical gathering area. Then on the right-hand side is a large neighborhood park. It's an 8.7-acre park, and a number of uses are envisioned here, both active and passive. So, you have sports fields, there's a disc golf course planned, walking trails, and really a great place to enjoy. But then there are four more parcels spaced, four more parks and amenities spaced throughout the sites that everyone has local access. We have a 1.8-acre dog park, that's shown on the upper left-hand corner. Then below that, a 2.3-acre gazebo park. The upper right is a 1.5-acre linear park, and that would be in the townhome section. And then, bottom right, last, is a .8-acre pocket park. So, parks spaced throughout the site. And then, we propose greenways and walking trails to connect all those parks. So, the greenway plan and the pedestrian connectivity plan is shown on this slide, and the greenways will, and the trails that we've proposed, will connect all of those sites internally. We've proposed over two and a quarter miles of greenway trails on the site. In addition, you see on this plan sidewalks on both sides of every street, and pedestrian crossings at every intersection. So, walkability is a defining feature of this project. And then, last but certainly not least, for residential development, we've proposed high-quality homes. Now, this is a traditional neighborhood, designed neighborhood, and I'll have some other folks that can talk in more detail on that, but my client envisions this as an age-and-place community. And what that means is that there will be home types for every phase of life, from first-time homebuyers all the way up to senior residents. There's not age-restricted senior living, but what there is, is master-down floor plans, and that means master bedrooms on the first floor, which is attractive to senior residents. So, what this allows is a neighborhood where grandparents and their grandchildren can live in the same community, and families can move up through each stage of their life. We have a mixture of housing types proposed, 696 single-family residences, and the current plan's 202 townhomes for a density of 2.7 units per acre. And then, there are a number of architectural commitments included in this rezoning. Of the 19 conditions that we have in this rezoning, 12 of those conditions are architectural commitments, and we had a lot of feedback about having commitments for facade treatment. So, for front facade, we've committed to a number of things, including having masonry on the front facade of every residence, and that's a minimum of a 24-inch water table on every residence. And then, there's another front facade commitment. It's an either-or. It's either the first floor will have more than 50% masonry, or if it doesn't have more than 50% masonry, it will have two different types of vinyl siding. So, it allows to have a number of different, unique facades. We also have commitments to design features on side facades. We understand it's important to have windows on side facades, and that's feedback that we received. What we've committed to in this plan is to have at least one window on every side facade, and that's not just N-units, that's every single residence will have at least one window on the side facade. And I encourage you to look at the sample elevations that are provided in our materials. You'll see that of those sample elevations, only one plan has that one window. In most cases, it's quite a few more, but there is one that has that one window, and so that's why that's the commitment that we've provided. So, those are the high notes on the rezoning. Again, this is, because this is a quasi-judicial hearing for the conditional use permit for the conceptual master plan, there are a number of elements that we need to submit testimony to, and we have experts to speak to all of these elements. I've put in bullet points kind of the main points of each provision that we're required to meet. This is UDO 4.7E, and there are 10 elements that we're required to meet, and we have witnesses here that will testify to each of these elements. Under UDO 6.12, for a planned residential development, there are six additional standards that we're required to meet with competent material and substantial evidence. There are some overlap between the two. So, the way that we've organized our presentation, when we have our witnesses come up to speak, I've listed the UDO provisions that are relevant to that testimony on each slide, so that we won't be going one by one labeling each provision. That way, we know which provision applies, and we'll go through in a more organic form. But the provisions that apply include ensuring that the proposal is compatible with surrounding land uses. There are specific design and dimensional standards that are required to be included. There are a number of specific details that are required to be in the master plan, from having provisions on parking and loading, signs, public facilities, and open space. And so, those are the elements that we'll hit. And then, when you get to the PRD standards, they're a bit more specific. There are dimensional standards. You're allowed to have deviations from those dimensional standards, and we'll explain, in some instances, why our dimensions deviate from the original standards, and why that's necessary for this project. And so, with that, I'd like to call my first witness. I'd like to call Mr. Ryan Akers.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Mr. Akers, can you please state your name, your address, and your professional experience?
I'm gonna be a little bit worse than you. I'm not gonna wear my face mask so I can talk and you all can hear me, but, mayor, counsel, thank you. My name is Ryan Akers. I'm a senior project manager with the McAdams Company, a civil engineering firm at 2905 Meridian Parkway in Durham. I'm a registered professional engineer in North Carolina. I've been practicing for 16 years. I have a master's degree in civil engineering from Cornell University. I have been preparing site plans and layouts similar to this project, well, maybe not 900 units, but similar in scale. Probably done over 100 of them in my career. So, my role on Edge of Auburn so far is to lead a team of planners and engineers to develop the plans in conformance with the code, the UDO, and that includes the planned development provisions and the planned residential development more particularly.
At this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Akers as an expert in site design and layout.
Very good.
So, this plan does meet, it does satisfy the UDO requirements, and so what we're gonna do is roll quickly through the slides, and I'm gonna basically show how we address each of these UDO elements. So, this slide, common recreation, open space, and buffers. This is the open space and tree preservation plan from our master plan. Here's a quick description of how we're meeting the UDO. We have more than 27% of the property, which is over 87 acres, that will be open space and serves the entire development. Open space is connected by publicly accessible greenways, trails, and sidewalks throughout the development. Over 37 acres of existing tree coverage will be preserved. These preserved areas will include existing streams and riparian buffers. We have a minimum of a 25-foot perimeter setback around the entire development, and in many areas, it's larger, as Collier pointed out earlier. Where possible, existing trees will remain in the setback, and other areas, where appropriate, may be supplemented with enhanced landscape and buffering, and that'll be provided. We do have six parks, amenity areas spaced throughout the development, and are connected by trails and sidewalks, and that's designed to be convenient to all the residents within the development. As to timing, these main amenity areas will be required to be constructed during each... As to timing, these main amenity areas will be required to be constructed during each, during Phase 1, and the remainder of the parks will be constructed in the respective phases. As to maintenance of ownership, the common space will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. That HOA will be established prior to construction with recordation at the final plat. In summary, and these points justify that the master plan complies with the common recreation, open space, buffering, and landscape requirements of the UDO 4.7E and Section 612. Each slide hereon, I will briefly discuss the justification with the compliance of the UDO being implicit. So the next slide is continuous pedestrian circulation. This pedestrian circulation and amenity connection plan, we've designed the pedestrian circulation system to connect all of the open spaces and amenities. We have sidewalks on both sides of every internal street. We have crosswalks at all internal intersections and sidewalks on the east side of Rock Quarry Road with frontage of a 10-foot multi-use path on the west side. We have sidewalks on the north side of Old Balcom with frontage and 10-foot multi-use path on the south side. In addition, there are over 2.27 miles of greenway trails connecting the parks, open spaces, and neighborhoods. Our public places are all connected.
Mr. Akers, does the master plan provide for safe and adequate pedestrian circulation?
It does. Slide number 13, design guidelines and dimensional standards. On pages nine through 23 of the master plan narrative document you all have, we have the comprehensive design guidelines and dimensional standards. This slide shows the breakdown of housing types we have proposed. The master plan includes separate guidelines and dimensional standards for each housing type. We have also included elevations for each housing type like those shown on the slide. Among other things, the design guidelines require covered front porches, outdoor patios or decks, certain siding and facade features, at least one-car garage on townhomes, and two cars on single-family detached. This slide shows the dimensional standards for the development and some of the deviations from the UDO. In most cases, we comply with the UDO. However, we have requested deviations for some of the dimensions, as shown here with italics. Why are we doing this? Well, that has to do with the fact that Collier just mentioned, this is called a traditional neighborhood design. As far as I'm aware, this is the only project in the town of Garner where TND application has been designed into the development. What that means, can you go to the overall site right quick? Okay, so on the lower right-hand corner of this slide is our development. If you come off of Rock Quarry Road, there's a light tan color, and then on the middle part, and then on the southern part, there's a kind of a, I'm gonna call it a burnt orange, like an orange donut with burnt orange around it. Those are our TND alley-fed townhomes and alley-fed single-family detached. That's the main entrance off the development. It's human scale with sidewalks on both sides, heavily landscaped, rear-loaded, which means you have more of a human scale of the units, and then all the cars are placed behind. There's street-side parking. It's more of an amenity. That pulls people from the road into the development, and then we have our main amenities that are shared throughout the development. And as you get into the development towards the rear, the housing size increases, and that's where you find you're more expensive and probably more age-targeted second-time home buyers. So we set that, this up in a traditional neighborhood design such that it would meet the varied components of product-type mixes and shared common open space. So in order to design that, we do in fact have to deviate from the large setbacks and go with more condensed development. It's better, it's less utilities per capita. It's just a better neighborhood design. The next one I'm gonna say real quickly, parking and signs. We will comply with UDO Sections 7.4 and 7.5. Public facilities, particularly utilities. Edge of Auburn will be served by the City of Raleigh Public Utilities. That will be publicly maintained, water and sewer. The design and construction will be in accordance with the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department Standards and Spec. Both water and sewer extended significantly off-site to serve this development, including 6,800 linear feet of 16-inch water main and 4,300 linear feet of sewer force main. The public utilities in concept form shown here do comply with the UDO Article 8, and the sewer system shown on these plans is safe and adequate for the proposed development and the surrounding area. Public facilities, safe transportation circulation. This slide illustrates our public traffic circulation plan. Our road-type sidewalks, greenways, trails, all integrate with one another and off-site widening and improvements. Street design, that is, the TND sections that we've designed, and circulation create options and redundant access points. We provide a safe and adequate pedestrian and vehicular circulation. Next, stormwater. We've committed to meeting the requirements of UDO Section 7.2. We have nine wet ponds and propose to meet Garner's stormwater runoff and nitrogen reduction control requirements, as well as detention for 1, 10, and 25-year storms. And finally, phasing. We propose five phases and design phasing so that each phase of the development meets the minimum requirements of the town of Garner as it relates to open space, parking requirements, and minimum tree coverage. We may look to further sub-phase each of these five currently proposed, given the sheer scope of this project.
All right, Ryan, and real quick, when you prepared the master plan, were you continuously checking for compliance with the UDO?
I was.
And does the master plan comply with all requirements of the UDO?
It does.
Any questions for this witness?
Question by counsel.
I have some questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Tellinger.
Is, you noted that there's phased construction. Is, and this is I guess a question for staff, and the applicant, are they not required to provide a timeline for the phasing of the development according to the UDO phasing?
They don't, as far as like a physical month or year timeline, they don't, we don't typically get that. We do check each phase to make sure it stands alone as far as open space, parking, tree coverage, those kind of things. We do ask them to number it sequentially in the order that they are planning on developing it. And then we do, in this case, there are conditions that we're asking you to put on it to ensure that the amenities for one phase gets built before the next phase is complete and that kind of thing.
I just wanna be, I just wanna know if this portion of the UDO is applicable or not, or it says phasing. The plan development, master plan includes a phasing plan for the development, if appropriate, with specific build-out dates. If the development is proposed to occur in phases, then guarantee shall be provided that project improvements and amenities are necessary and desirable for residents of the project or that they are at the benefit of the town, are constructed with the first phase of project, that part's there, or if not possible, then is early in the project as technically feasible. So are they not required, it sounds like they're required to have a timeline for their phasing.
They don't give us something concrete. I mean, we talk about it in general as we're going through the plan, but we don't specifically say Phase 1 will be complete by this date, Phase 2 will be complete by that date. We don't have that kind of firm timeline from them, no.
The other question is on, help me understand the, and clarify the difference between canopy preservation and open space. What's the, is there an overlap there? And also, I guess the first lead into that question is, what percentage of this land is tree-covered right now?
Most of the site right now is some form of tree coverage.
It's nearly 100%, right? So I guess my question is, you have the 12% or the 12.4%, so 0.4% over the requirement for the existing tree preservation, and then there's the 27, that means the 25 for open space. So what percentage of that existing tree preservation is also part of that open space preservation?
I would say most of it is within the open space. There is some additional tree conservation, which is outside of the open space, but most of it is contained within that number.
And I know it's the terms of our UDO, but why such a low preservation of tree canopy as the comprehensive plan is included by reference or PRDs, and I believe 76% of residents, I know that's not, you held that, want things, development that protects tree canopy? So why the 12.4?
It's a balancing of a number of features, so we're trying to hit consistency with both what the comprehensive plan calls for as far as residential density and then the open space requirements. And so when we're balancing the open space requirements of 12%, we try to exceed that, but then when you're looking at having between 2.5 to 5 units per acre called under the comprehensive plan, we're trying to fit in the right number of units as well. So it's a balance between the two, and that's how we reach those numbers.
Would this be a viable project if the deviations were adhered to? Fiscally, I mean, would it still be a viable development?
I think that would have to go through a whole nother round of, I think, underwriting and a bunch of steps that haven't been taken. So I don't know that we could answer that question today, but it's financed based on what the project has proposed.
Tellinger, if you'll hold just a minute, let me see if other council members, and I'll come back to you, have questions. Mr. Vance, did you have any?
No questions.
Mr. Behringer. This side, Mr. Singleton?
Not this time.
Not this time.
Okay. Mr. Tellinger, if you have.
I'm done for now.
Okay, all right. All right, so who's your next witness?
At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Earl Llewellyn. Mr. Llewellyn, if you would state your name, address, and experience.
Sure, my name is Earl Llewellyn, traffic engineer with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates. I have a BS in civil engineering from NC State University, registered professional engineer in North Carolina, have been working in the traffic engineering field for over 30 years.
At this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Llewellyn as an expert in traffic congestion and mitigation.
So we first begin scoping this traffic analysis with a meeting with town staff and NC DOT as required to confirm the study area and assumptions. That study has since been approved by both parties. I won't go into the list of improvements, they're quite lengthy, but they involve improvements, whether it's turn lanes or signalization or a combination of the two, at seven area intersections, pretty significant list. With these improvements, good overall levels of service will result at all study area intersections. And keep in mind that these address not only our site traffic impact, but traffic deficiencies that occur today and other background development. So with these improvements in place and based on the analysis, it's my professional opinion that the project adequately mitigates its traffic impact.
Questions for this witness?
I have none.
Here, here.
I'm sorry.
Any here, here?
Yes, in reference to the, your improvements that are proposed here, was I-540 included in the process?
Actually, I-540 was not. The current schedule for I-540 is to begin construction in year 2029, which would be post-completion of this project. So we didn't assume any of the benefits of that project at all, or any improvements along, for example, Rock Quarry Road at the interchange.
Got you. So the interchange is that the improvements that you're in placing now may possibly be a huge, a significant betterment with the inclusion of I-540 being finished?
No question, yes.
Look for the questions.
Okay. Any others? Thanks, sir.
At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Hunter Howell.
Okay, come forward.
Mr. Howell, if you could please state your name, address, and experience for the council.
My name is Hunter Howell. My office address is 412 East Chatham Street in Cary, North Carolina, 27511. I'm a professional real estate appraiser. I work for Valbridge Property Advisors. I am a licensed North Carolina Certified General Appraiser, and I have been appraising properties in Wake County for approximately seven years.
At this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Howell as an expert in the field of real property appraisal.
Okay.
So I was hired to determine whether the proposed Edge of Auburn master plan is compatible with the surrounding land uses and will maintain and/or enhance the value of adjacent properties. Based on my review of the proposed master plan, the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, my analysis of the neighborhood and properties surrounding the proposed development is my professional opinion that the plan adequately is compatible with the surrounding land uses and will maintain or enhance the surrounding property values. How I came to these conclusions is I researched the surrounding land uses in which the master plan will be located. The surrounding land uses include a mix of vacant land, standalone, single-family residential homes, and a residential subdivision. With the surrounding land uses being residential in nature, the master plan of Edge of Auburn being residential subdivision as well, it does, it is compatible with the surrounding residential land uses. Furthermore, the master plan will have direct access to Rock Quarry Road, and it would make sense for larger development to be placed at this location for easy access. Also, Interstate 540's plan extension will eventually run in close proximity to this plan development, and that is advantageous for larger developments to be placed here to ease traffic congestion, not only for the surrounding properties, but for the larger area as well. And then to address how the master plan will maintain and enhance the value of the adjacent properties, I've recalled on previous work I've done in the past. As new residential developments come to areas that are less developed, it enhances the surrounding areas positively in terms of property values. This has been seen in several instances across the Triangle area as a whole. Two master plan developments I have experienced in appraising portions of and/or appraising adjacent land uses include the Flowers Plantation in Clayton and Wendell Falls. Both of these developments began with residential development that sparked further development of adjacent properties. As these two developments came to fruition, adjacent land values increased along with demand in these areas. Although these developments are not located, are located in different areas of the Triangle, I consider them to be comparable to the Edge of Auburn's master plan and the positive effects they have on surrounding areas. In conclusion, based on my research, the proposed Edge of Auburn's master plan is compatible with the surrounding land uses and will maintain or enhance the value of adjacent properties.
Okay, sure. Questions for this, for this witness down here?
I have a question.
Okay.
So this is a market rate project, correct?
I'm sorry.
It's just a market rate project?
Yeah, yes, sir.
What are gonna be the price points of the products in this development when this product, when this project comes online?
I think that would be a question for Lennar representatives.
He's an appraisal, appraiser though, right?
It's a matter of the plant, the homes that are planned, it's just so that not every home has been designed, and it's, I guess, we'll pick it all.
I'll let your expert answer the question.
Yeah, so I didn't.
Are you familiar with, you're familiar with their development and their product, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir.
In your professional estimation, what do you think the starting price points for their Phase 1 would be?
So I didn't go into the residential price point of the homes. I more looked at the surrounding land values as a whole, not just the development of the homes. I was looking more at the development. That's kind of how I was pulled in for this part.
As a professional, can you give me your professional opinion on what you think the price point of these homes will be?
I haven't discussed what the price points are, so I can't make a, you know, assumption on that.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious what they're gonna cost. I mean, does somebody wanna?
I'd like to call Mr. Stephen Dorn from Lennar.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Stephen Dorn with Lennar. Address 1100 Perimeter Park Drive in Morrisville, North Carolina. Yes, to answer your question, we do have a general idea of the price points. One of the value, I think, of this community is we have a wide range of price points, starting in like the 250s, all the way to possibly 450. Those are obviously plus or minus numbers, but that's our target range. With the seven different products, we have that flexibility to have different kind of buyers in mind.
Let me ask your appraiser this question then. If you have market price points of 250 to 450 right now, you've already done an analysis of the surrounding properties and assessed that their values will increase, correct?
Yes, yes.
What would be the increase in the value, market value of these properties in the future?
In the future?
The 250, would it move, where would it move to over this 10-year period?
So as an appraiser, we work on historical values. So for me to say in five years that it's gonna increase by 3%, you know, would be putting somebody out there, it wouldn't be a correct value for me to give. We only appraise on historical values. But over the years, within the three-mile radius of this property, home values have increased. increased approximately, let's say, five percent almost each year, but that's been a lot in the last 2017, 18, and 19 years. We have seen an increase, and if that trend continues, which is kind of how we do things, then yes, you would say it would trend higher. But I can't give an exact.
And Mr. Howell, in your opinion, would you say that this this project would be advantageous to that trend?
Yes.
So adjoining properties would increase in value at a.
As these.
That's your professional opinion?
Yes, as my in my professional opinion, the surrounding properties would.
And these would increase kind of in line with those other properties?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, so four, three to five percent a year?
Yeah, I mean, that's what the historical has been, but, you know, I can't tell you that for fact.
For sure, understood, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Here, none, great. Mr. Matthews, okay? None, okay. Any other witnesses?
No other witnesses, I just would like to recap the evidence very quickly.
Please.
Just just to recap again, we had three expert witnesses testify, and we believe we presented competent material and substantial evidence to meet all the requirements of UDO 4.7E and UDO 6.12. The first element of 4.7E requires certain elements within the master plan which we've outlined and which are included in the physical document that's been submitted to the council. Mr. Howell also just testified to the compatibility with surrounding land uses, and his professional opinion is that this will maintain or enhance the value of those adjacent properties. Our, as required by the UDO, our submission has extensive design guidelines and dimensional standards, and where deviations are required, they're justified based on the traditional neighborhood design and all of the positive benefits that come with that neighborhood style. Our parking and loading will comply with UDO requirements. Mr. Akers testified to that, as well as sign compliance. He testified that public facilities will be safe and adequate, and that we have sufficient common and open space within development. We talked about all of those parks and amenities that exceed the minimum requirements, the eighty-one point seven acres of open space, and the thirty-nine acres of tree preservation all exceed the the requirements for this development. Our stormwater management plan will comply with UDO control to the one, ten, and twenty-five year storms. Our phasing plan does ensure that all the necessary components of each phase are built with that phase, so that there aren't parts of the development that remain undeveloped until later phase outside of the proper phasing. I I stated at the beginning, and Mr. Akers testified, that our proposal is consistent with the Comprehensive Growth Plan. We're directly in line with what the future land use map says, two point five to five units per acre, we're at two point seven. We've proposed a mixture of single-family and townhome residences, and Mr. Akers confirmed that the plan that has been submitted complies with all aspects of the UDO. PRD standards of six twelve get a bit more specific, but we've justified the dimensional deviations that are required based on the TND design. We do have a mixture of housing types and mixed neighborhoods, as shown on that conceptual land use plan. We talked about the minimum twenty-five-foot setback around the entire perimeter that is in fact greater in several locations. We committed preserving thirty-nine and a half acres of existing tree coverage that focuses around riparian areas and streams. Talked about common space and open space several times, and then the last one, sixty-foot separation between single-family, should say multifamily is the requirement, but in any case, that would be included in this plan. With that, happy to answer any additional questions. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harsh. Any other questions for this gentleman?
I have one question for the transportation gentleman.
Okay, if we can go quickly. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So a question on increased traffic. This development would bring, when built out, an additional eight thousand approximate trips per day? Is that correct?
It sounds about right. Quite honestly, we we work in peak hour, AM and PM peak hour, but that sounds about right, correct?
So that would be, and then Rock Quarry's at fifty-one hundred, and Garner Road is was stated at being at eighty-four hundred, and I might understand the peak capacity of those those Garner Road is a two-lane road, correct? And Rock Quarry Road north, after your improvements, so you're going to do improvements on that one section on the west side of the property, but it's going to terminate into Rock Quarry Road, which is a two-lane facility, is that correct? So that would bring the Garner Road, the Rock Quarry, up to thirteen thousand, and ten being sort of the maximum for a two-lane road, correct? That's what we hear all the time, ten thousand is sort of peak capacity for a two-lane road.
Let me try to clarify that, and that's an important distinction. Typically, you can get as much as sixteen thousand vehicles a day on a two-lane road. What limits it are the intersections, whether they're unsignalized, signaledized, the different turning movements. So what we're doing is distributing the traffic out of the development to those intersections. Not every trip impacts every particular segment or every direction. So in in doing that, we can state with the intersections being the control points or the constraints of the network, all the intersections work acceptable as a service. I think that's a point you may be getting to.
And what level of what level of service will they operate at?
They vary, but they're all level of service D or better, which is the state standard.
Okay.
Do you have another question? The Balcom Road extension, the change in the route, what are the improvements on that road going to look like considering you own property on both sides? Are you going to equally improve both sides, or because they're building a new road in the town?
Sorry, hate this thing. So that portion of old Balcom that is getting realigned is part of the NC DOT project, so we're going to set our project up and grade to match that elevation, but we're not actually going to participate in that since it is already a funded portion of the DOT configuration there.
Thanks.
Okay, does that conclude the applicant's, certainly expert witnesses, I guess?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other witnesses for the applicant that are planning to speak? Okay, hearing none. Ordinarily, we would take a recess to give everybody a chance to stretch their legs and to attend to other matters. Let me get a feel for how many people are here who wish to speak about this project from the public. If you'll raise your hand. I see two hands out there, is that right? Okay. Counsel, I would be inclined maybe to go ahead and hear from these witnesses, and then perhaps we can take a break before we vote.
Mr. Mayor, with a storm going outside, I think as expeditiously as we can move our meeting out, I'd be all for that, and I'll hang on as long as everybody else can, so that's just my two cents worth, because the storm's coming, we had a lot of power outages, and we all got concerns.
Okay, your point's well made, sure enough. Okay, let's, excuse me, let's hear from either one of you gentlemen, which care to speak first, please come to the podium and state your name and address and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joe Forging, F-O-R-G-E-N-G, and I live at 2708 Branch Road, which is a road that is adjacent to this property we're talking about. I have two questions for the representatives of the developer. The first one is, having seen that the single-family homes will have at least a twenty-foot front yard, does that include the width of a sidewalk? Is the sidewalk?
So the question about a twenty-foot front yard would be exclusive of a sidewalk? Because you need to have, if it's a front load, meaning the garage is in the front, you need adequate parking stuff for a car on a parking pad. If it's rear load, I believe we have a reduction down from twenty to something smaller, but you still have street trees, and there would be no, there would be no driveway, so the unit would have the cars and the garage in the back.
All right, okay. My second question is, will the will the roads be wide enough for on-street parking?
The roads that have rear-loaded alleys will. Those that don't, we won't propose any parking on the front.
How will people who have guests, parties, and so forth find parking?
The question about ancillary parking for the townhome development portions, we have extra parking proposed. There's on-street, and I believe we have off-street parking bays proposed for portions where we have single-family detached. Unfortunately, they are going to have to park between driveways and some of the wider lots, so you're going to have more, you know, you have a fifty, sixty-foot lot, there will be areas between the driveways. I think the town ordinance does allow on-street parking for for public streets in those situations.
All right. I just want to say, I I visited the sister community of Auburn Village in the evening when there would have been a lot, when there would be a lot of people home, and the front of the the front of the the frontage of the community is very attractive. When I got to the back, I found everything was so tight, it 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 made me nervous just to look at it. The driveways were so short, and I think the cars were parked over the over the sidewalks. I I just I just thought the should the lots should have been bigger, the roads should have been wider, and I'm not sure how that compares with this development in question, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay.
That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, sir, thank you. I recognize the other gentleman, if you will.
Hi, my name is Randy Egland. My wife Joanna and I live at 2609 Branch Road, right down the street. I have two comments. One is, I believe the traffic needs to be investigated further on down to Guy Road and East Garner Road, where they're proposing a light at Rock Quarry and East Garner. I think they really need one at Guy Road as well. The traffic is going to increase exponentially, and when I-540 is done, that's going to make it that much worse. So I respectfully request that you take a look at that. The second thing is, we cannot get internet on Branch Road. We can't get it from AT&amp;T, and we can't get it from Spectrum. And now Spectrum is chomping at the bit with these folks with nine hundred homes, and they're going to run internet for these guys, and I believe that when that happens, we're going to be completely blocked off. We're never going to get it. And I respectfully request that someone come to our aid, because AT&amp;T and Spectrum will not service us on Branch Road, they refuse. AT&amp;T's got bad wires in the ground, Spectrum will not run a cable sixty-five hundred feet unless I pay a hundred and one thousand dollars to run it. And so I respectfully request that these folks help us out and say when Spectrum comes and grabs the gravy of the nine hundred homes that they're putting in there, that they allow them to run and service us on Branch Road and Farmdale. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, thank you. Okay. That covers all the witnesses who wish to testify at this time. Counsel, I'm prepared to suggest that we close the hearing and get a motion on the floor, but just before I do, I'll see if there are any other concluding questions or comments very quickly. I'll start on this end down here. None for you, Mr. Matthews? For you, Ms. Singleton?
Oh, not at this time, Mr.
Okay. Ms. Behringer, Ms. Tellinger?
Like you, wanted to help him get some internet.
Okay.
Can we hear him? Can we allow him to speak?
Sure, yeah.
Was a question that came up at the neighborhood meeting is, how can utilities be provided to some of these rural, these neighbors that are further connected? And I think it's it's safe to say that when you bring internet and all of those resources to a nine hundred, nine hundred unit community, that you're bringing a lot of the infrastructure that's going to make it a heck of a lot easier for those neighbors to get it down the road, because it's going to be running right through and adjacent to their properties. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, okay. Any more? Mr. Vance? You good with any question or comments? Okay. All right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to say that in reference to the Auburn, the Auburn, the Auburn, the other the other development, and when the warden and sewer came down Auburn Nightdale Road, I know that they were able to tap into the the utilities when they came down Auburn Nightdale Road. Just one missing there, too.
Thanks, sir, thank you, yes. Okay. Mr. Attorney, I don't know of any reason that we can't close the hearing and call for a motion. Is that right?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I I think closing the hearing is a thing to do at this point.
Okay. All right, we've heard the witnesses, and close the hearing at this point.
Let me remind you, you have three things to do, the the annexation and the two plan approvals.
I think the sequence was the annexation, the the rezoning?
That is the sequence, but I don't want you to approve the annexation unless you're going to approve the others. So if the council could identify questions or concerns and get a feel for whether the approval is forthcoming for the for the development before you vote on the annexation. It's just very, it's a difficult spot if you approve the annexation but do not approve the development.
Right, and I think that point was made to me earlier by someone. So counsel, you understand the sequence, but one falls with the other, so. Counsel is ready to to make that decision? I hope you are, that the annexation certainly goes hand in hand with the approval of the other part. Counsel, have any questions or comments or concerns about what the attorney has advised us on? Okay, hearing none. I believe I did officially close the hearing, did I not? And so a motion is in order, first of all, as relates to the annexation, correct? So counsel, are you prepared to make that motion?
Prepared.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt the annexation ordinance 20204069.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries, so the annexation is approved. A motion now would be in order for the rezoning portion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the town council accept the staff statement regarding the zoning consistency of PDZ 1905, Edge of Auburn with with regarding the zoning consistency with the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan detail in Section Five of the staff report as our own, and I therefore move forward further that the town council adopt ordinance number 202040770, approving rezoning request PD 71905 as is reasonable and the public interest because it will likely allow housing, household living, and supporting daycare uses that are attractive to younger families and with children as well as older residents, looking to maintain private and smaller outdoor spaces, allow the development of an appropriate density of housing in the area in which it is located.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Matthews? Okay. Motion's properly made and seconded. Questions, comments, counsel? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's opposition, no.
No.
Okay, one nay vote. Motion carries. Counsel, now a motion would be in order for the last segment, which is the approval of the of the master plan.
Listen, Mr. Mayor, I move the council accept the staff statements regarding the plan consistency in Section Seven of this report as our own, and find the application meets the ten permit criteria criteria in Section Three dash one four D, and therefore approve PD MTP 1905, Edge of Auburn, with the eight conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Singleton, okay. Motion made, properly seconded. Comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a quick comment.
Okay.
I still have concerns about this particular project with traffic. Extremely, another very extremely disappointing project when it. Extremely, another very extremely disappointing project when it comes to tree and canopy preservation, and another missed opportunity along 540 for us to do, or developer to come forward with a more diverse project. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dellinger. Any other comments by counsel? Okay, motion properly before us. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no.
No.
Okay. One negative vote is noted. The motion carries in a 4-1 vote. Okay, I believe we have concluded all of the business related to those matters. Am I right? Is there anything else, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you all for your, for your time and indulgence. We appreciate your good presentation, and we look forward to, we look forward to seeing and hearing from you in the future, okay?
Mr. Mayor, before we recess, I have just a quick comment on process.
Sure.
Just got a quick question. In the future, I would like the council to have access to the minutes from the planning commission when they see it. And I know that they haven't been approved yet, which is part of the problem in the flow of our process. There's no official recordation of the proceedings of the planning commission for the council to reference, or for the public to reference before these projects come before us. We need to fix that. It, it, it's not the right sequence of events.
Facebook, I like it.
You can, but that's not technically an official recordation. It's not the minutes. You can. I, I agree, some people don't have internet access. That gentleman out there can have an internet access. So we need to fix that process. That's my only comment.
Okay. Anybody else on counsel want to weigh in on Mr. Dellinger's comment, perhaps suggestion? I don't think we will take a formal vote at this time, but we can certainly circle back around to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Maybe incorrect, but I believe if the legislation 160D is passed, that, that process will change, and that we will have public hearings first, then it will go to the planning commission, and then come back to us for a vote.
That's true, but I don't think that goes into effect until August of next year. Is that correct? Is that correct? Potentially.
It's required by July of next year, but we're going to be doing it sooner than that.
But we'll be seeing seven or eight, maybe 10 more months of the, of these developments. I've seen, we have a lot more coming, and I'd like for, there to be enough spacing between when planning commission does their work, for us to have an official recordation of their decision and thought process, that can be part of these proceedings as part of their recommendation. There's a lot of information and suggestions and thought that they give in their meetings that doesn't make it here. And I think, I'd like, I think it's to be part of the information that we process as opposed just to their vote.
I think I understand your request, Mr. Dellinger, but I'm inclined to suggest that that's probably an issue, I don't know how much time and effort it requires, maybe not much, that maybe the entire council should agree or disagree before we set any particular policy on that. I don't know if counsel wants to take it up at this time, if you want to contemplate that, and we can take it up at the next meeting. It's not going to go away.
I think we should take it up at the next meeting, give us time to do some research on our own.
Okay. Counsel okay with that?
I guess my question is, if it's unanimous, with due respect to my colleague down there, if, if the planning commission unanimously endorses a, a plan, I don't know what it is we're going to look at beyond that. And if it's like a, a split decision or something, obviously there might have been something controversial, we could, you know, chat about, but no, that's presented to us as part of that presentation. If they, if it's a, say, three to two decision, what the concerns were, but, but that's the purpose of the planning commission, is to sort through all those things and make their recommendation to us. So I'm, I'm just saying, if it's, if it's a unanimous decision, I don't know where we need to wade into it, because like Ms. Singleton said, it's, it's up there for people to look at, if they have a desire to look at it, if they want to get that much involved with it. That's just my two cents worth, and that's all.
And I guess to, to your point, there is a lot of discussion, and there are a lot of machinations that that commit, the commission makes. I've watched them. A lot of considerations, with, with this one around stormwater, traffic, timing of development, that I think are, would be informative to this body in making its decisions beyond just the vote. I think you're right, if it comes unanimous, that there seems to be consent, but there's also a lot of discussion, recommendations that go along with that, that don't make it into the vote itself.
Okay, I'm going to-
True, but the planning commission is really a technical review board, they're supposed to, really, by law, the clauses process is, does it meet the requirements of the UDO? And when they espouse a lot of other things, that's fine, but technically, by the law, if this, if, if we had denied this, or done something, and the applicant took it to court, that didn't, that didn't hold up. That's why, that's why he goes to the attorney's, it goes through everything now, in such a nice, rigid, formal process, so in case it went to court, they had covered all their bases. So there are technical review panel, who sometimes make suggestions, and sometimes it's right in line with it being a technical review panel, and sometimes it's debatable whether some of the things they suggest are allowed.
By statute, they have a lot of flexibility, considering what, they have flexibility to what, we give them some additional authority to do. And if there are those other types of considerations that don't necessarily weigh into, the technical review aspect you're talking about is very technical, but if we would like to have some of their other insights, we have great expertise on that planning commission, we are allowed to process that and take that information as part of our decision-making process, which is more broad beyond just the UDO. So I'd love, I'd love just to leverage their expertise in some way, on some of these projects.
Given, given the time and the fact that we've been at this for a while, I, we're not done with it yet, Mr. Dellinger, but I would suggest we let that simmer is not the right word. I'm trying to think what the other better word is, but-
Marinate.
Marinate. Yeah, that's a good term, I think. Thanks, sir. And we can come back to that, let staff sort of weigh in on that perhaps, and, and come back around to that, perhaps at our next meeting. Okay? All right. Those are all of our public hearings. Counsel, you want to take a five-minute break, and then let's come back and finish off the agenda? Okay, I think it would be helpful, probably the most obvious it would to me, I would acknowledge, so I'm going to call a five-minute recess. Okay, call sound, excuse me, council back into session, and we will pick up with our agenda after the public hearings. I don't believe we have anything under new and old business. Anybody aware of anything? No. Committee reports, are there any this evening? Any committees? Okay, none. All right, we will hear from the town manager at this point.
You have Garner Info. The first two items in Garner Info have been closed. Is the, well, the first one with the transfer trucks has been closed, so glad to see that.
Yes.
Kind of working with the owner during this COVID-19, and them trying to find spots, so we finally got that closed out. John's going to give an update on the BRT, information we got, I think, following the last presentation, so you want to do that now?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council members, Gabby had a brief mention she wanted to make at the last meeting when she presented, and it slipped both of our minds. We just want to let you know that your, the, because of the revenue's shortfalls due to COVID, the Campo is reassessing all the programs and projects that are supposed to receive weight transit funding in the next few years, from '21 through '30, the years '21 through '30. And the first step in that process is going to be some public input, gathering on transportation priorities. Any of you that are on Campo, email distributions may have already gotten that survey link today. For those of you who do not get it, I'll send it out tomorrow, but it's a community survey that will also come out through social media and other means. Again, it's just to get the community's input on prioritization of items that are in the transit plan, so they can use that as a basis for making decisions if they have to change any of the funding allocations. So look for a link from that meeting tomorrow, but I'll forward from Campo, and then you'll see that go out in our social media as well.
Okay.
So this is a Campo-related survey?
Yeah, Campo-related survey, and it'll also say, it may be granted as Go Triangle, I mean, Go Forward, which is the, the marketing name for the entire transit program, so it may be top label would Go Forward, but it'll need from the Campo staff who runs the weight transit program.
Thank you, sir.
Another thing I would mention is, the Economic Development Director, Joe Stalin, sent you an email, asking for your participation in the survey by Triangle J on economic development, and how to shape the region's economic strategy, just looking for input from folks throughout the region. So if you could take time to, to participate in that, that would be much appreciated.
Mr. Manager, and by the way, I, I contacted Joe. When, when I tried to click on the link, it wouldn't, it wouldn't load for me, or either on my computer, or, but at any rate, I believe he said he would check the link or do something. So I don't know if anybody else has tried it, but maybe it's, maybe it's functional now, I don't know. Go ahead.
Yeah, I haven't tried it, but if we have issues with it, we'll contact Triangle J and let them know.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay. I skipped right over Mr. Baggett, didn't mean to do that. The attorney has anything?
No, thank you.
He's probably reporting he's ready to go home, I imagine.
I'm all with you.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Wherever you are, I am.
Gotta like it, gotta like it.
That sounds like a biblical injury.
He was very interested in knowing how many applications he's got for the position.
Say, I noticed Fred goes out the door first at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, you're right. He's got a ways to drive. Okay, I believe, let me see, council reports, let me start down here with Mr. Vance.
Yes, I'd like to just echo what Councilwoman Behringer said about the young man who was unfortunately killed in the car accident, Mr. Ymir Green. He was a church member of ours, and he is, it's a tragic story, but it's a great success story of a person who was adopted into our church family, and whose mother passed away and was adopted again by one of the ministers of the church, and turned to a fine young man. And I just want to echo what you, what you said, we loved him and really care for him.
And I forgot to mention that Ymir actually worked four summers as a camp counselor at YMCA summer camp. He was just an absolutely amazing person.
And there's somebody I lived with at my house that knew him through the school system, and had similar comments to make about his path of progression, if you will, over time, sure enough.
Yeah.
It's a sad, but his life speaks volumes, I guess, for what he did. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
One thing, very briefly, from constituent Michael Bowen, he lives on 4804 Winter Locken Road, emailed me, said his parents lived in, on Vesta Drive forever, and they moved there recently, and their house is, they sent pictures, it's flooded twice since they've moved there. The creek has come up, and I looked at the map, the, the house itself is in the 100-year floodplain, it kind of goes in between, but I know by definition, that means it's a 1% chance every year, so it seems like there's some flooding going on there, and I'm just not sure, you know, what our, our procedures are for maintaining the streams downstream, what the impacts are. And also, do we track these types of flood damage events to see if there's a consistent pattern that's starting to happen, where there's flooding where there didn't used to be flooding, due potentially to development, but also just more rain and all those types of things? Do, what, you know, what, how do we, and I know some subs just in the floodplain, they're going to flood, but I don't know. I saw your email today that they're clearing streams and things, but what's the process for maintaining that on a sort of consistent basis?
We typically will clear, like, the, the pipes and the infrastructure. We don't actually do the stream per se, the actual stream bank and bed and body of water. And then also, some of those areas are known, because they are in the floodplain, and the way our policy reads, before we really get really involved, is that it has to flood the first floor elevation, not, not just the crawl space. And the yards and the crawl space is kind of classified as nuisance flooding, and only when it gets into the structural flooding might we get involved. And then when you get into structural flooding, there's, you know, sometimes flood insurance requirement, there's some federal flood program, I guess, insurance or whatever you can get and all of that, but we don't really have an active program to deal with that.
We don't really track it until there's-
I'll take a second of your time. I've been working over the last year with our engineer Chris Johnson, also Mr. Hodges has covered on these emails, because a long time resident, I've been talking with him, and we were concerned about the stormwater pond behind the Lowe's Home Improvement. Well, after the best part of a year, to get up with the right owner, I just sent an email to him again last week, because they had got a price on fixing it, but the COVID kind of slowed things down, but it was not, it's not working properly, and Chris sent a letter, I think he got Mr. Baggett involved to send him a nasty letter, but then 30 days, we're going to take legal action, because I think that's part of the issue. When that was built many years ago, it would probably have to be much bigger nowadays than it was then, I don't know, but I think some of the issue is the water may not be being retained, detained, whatever retaining it is, might be some of the issue. But yes, there have been some issues down Green Barre. We've replaced several culverts over the years, under, on the pipes under the ground, but I think the stormwater pond is an issue that we need to get resolved, if the device is even working, because if not, the water's just flowing through there. And I know we, and last week, we got about three and a half inches of rain one day, so it's going to flood almost anywhere. I mean, I don't have a curb in front of our house, and there's been three houses above me, like a stream we go mowing, but what they've got down there is some, some issues. And I, hopefully this will get resolved sometime. I tracked all the emails, I've cut them off. And Mr. Hodges made when we touch on that?
I would say Chris Johnson.
Engineer Johnson's on the team, so if he wants to elaborate on some of that.
I know that, that the engineers office did get a number of these last week. I think this address may have been one of them. I know there was a Winter Locken address that was one of them. So Chris is on now, so he may know whether or not 4804 was one of the specific requests that he got last week.
I don't know about that specific address, but I think Councilmember Singleton covered it pretty accurately. We're, we're hoping that we can get some improvements made at the Lowe's Home Improvement Storm Retention Pond that may alleviate some of the downstream, but won't know until that gets done, how much of an effect that has.
Okay.
And that was one of the, that was one of the addresses last week, from Mr. Johnson's weekly report. So we did have several around town last week, some of which are completely contained on private property, and so that makes it even more challenging, because it's, it's, that, a lot of these are very difficult for owners to understand, why it's their responsibility and not the town's, or vice versa, but we are collecting them, and we'll look for trends there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Ms. Behringer? Okay, Ms. Singleton?
And what Damian touched on with the development is, of course, when Green Barre was built, it was almost like the country in Garner, like there wasn't anything around it, and whatever development's been around it, the stormwater flows that way, and so the pond, I'm glad, Chris, I'm glad they're working on it, so we can see some releases that's working properly, if anything can be done to help with that. Item that we passed tonight was the reduction ordinance that was mentioned from Thompson Road down towards Ireck Blanton Court from 45 to 35.
Yes.
When that takes place, I know a lot of it was done because we're moving the crosswalk. When that takes place, can we make sure we get a big, large sign up there? I'm not talking about a speed limit sign, I'm talking about the speed limit changes. Can we make sure one of those gets out there? Of course, we could be out there all day, 24 hours a day, and people can drive 57 miles an hour, but at least if we put a sign there near Thompson Road, I'd like to have that.
We're working on signage. I've also asked communications staff if they would start thinking about a campaign to publicize the speed limit change, the move of that crossing, as well as the new crossing at the Y, and the new signage that's going to be at Park-Greenway Crossing, since that is a, a part of a system, that a lot of people use that entire system, and is the sidewalks being completed on timber. So we thought that all those projects were packaged together nicely for a, a safety campaign, that we could go out and try to, to publicize that as broadly in the community as we could. So we'll also look at signage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
That's all I have, thank you.
And we did allude to that before you got here, but I personally think, I'm glad to see that speed reduction through there, and hopefully it'll slow down the neighborhood. Mr. Matthews?
Good to go.
Okay. All right. I don't have anything at this point, so counsel, the last thing on our agenda is a closed session, so I will entertain a motion that we go into closed session. I believe we can stay here, is that correct?
I'll make sure we're clear for you.
Okay, while you're doing that-
Mayor, I move we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143318, the 11, Subset A, Subset 3, to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation.
Motion properly made and seconded. Any discussion by counsel? All in favor of closed session per this- All in favor of closed session per this statutory site, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. All right. We will be in closed session. Okay. Counsel was back in open session. Counsel went into closed session to confer with attorney regarding legal matters, and we received information in a report that we will use for future reference, but no other action was taken. Do I have a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I have moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.